Good afternoon. My name is Bob Welsh. This forum is being held on behalf of the Johnson County Task Force on Aging. When we originally planned this, we planned it for the contested candidacy in Iowa City, Corleville, and North Liberty. It turns out there's no contested races in Corleville, and so we're devoting the first hour to the Iowa City and the last half hour to North Liberty. We sort of drew cards to see who would go first. And let me say, the question that we asked all the candidates to come prepared to answer was, if elected, what would you propose your city do to better serve the increasing number of seniors? And I'm going to ask the candidates to come up here to the podium to speak for those three minutes. And the gentleman here will let you know when you have a minute left, when you have 30 seconds left, and when he says, "Thank you," that means end, okay? And we sort of drew cards to see who would go first. And District C got that. And then we drew, and Scott gets to go first.
Hello, I am Scott McDonough. I'm running for District C. And I'm going to apologize right off the bat. I didn't understand the format. I was going to introduce myself and talk about me for a little bit, but I'll ad lib here. I own a construction company. It's McDonough Structures. It's a design-build corporation I started in 1994. And so one of the things, as elderly, disabled, one of the things I really want to push is universal design. My company has done several projects with that, designing additions, homes, remodels for elderly, handicapped. And sometimes it's not even people that are handicapped yet, but there are people that are, let's face it, no one's going backwards in age, and they're getting to the point where they want to buy a house, and they know they want to stay there for as long as they can. So they want to do a remodel so that they can stay there as long as possible. My company does that. We work with it. And a lot of it's really just kind of common sense stuff, like zero entry, no elevation on the entry, making the steps as accessible as possible, making it wheelchair accessible. And a lot of these things really don't add any cost to a project. Again, they're just plain common sense type things. That's what I would push for, and that's one of my big-ticket items. Thank you.
John? Next, John Thomas. Let me point out that in the city council election, you can vote for one of these two gentlemen.
In thinking about what city council might provide for an age-friendly community, I would like to emphasize this notion of what I refer to as belonging, the sense that all of us really need to feel that we belong in a community. And so for persons with disabilities, aging, I would often say with youth, these are groups within a community that often find that they are not as well accommodated. They don't feel that they belong in quite the same way that other members of the community would feel. So to the degree a community serves the needs of the young, the aged, and the disabled, I think that reflects well on that community. Some of the things I would emphasize would be elements within the community that I would look at would be outdoor spaces and buildings. People need public places to gather, both indoors and out. I would emphasize that in general, we need to design our community to be barrier-free. That would begin with curb ramps, making sure our sidewalks are well-connected. In winter, that we have snow removal. I know in my neighborhood, I get quite frustrated by the fact that often our sidewalks are not kept clear of snow. In terms of parks and outdoor spaces, my background is in landscape architecture. So I've worked on a number of parks, mainly in San Francisco, but helped with some here in terms of renovation. Accessibility is extremely important with that regard. Again, curb ramps, accessible parking, making sure that there are pathways within the park or open space to all the program activities that are provided. And what was that? Anyway. Interestingly enough, in Iowa City, many parks are not, in my view, accessible. They do not have pathways which meet the criteria for accessibility. They need to be firm and stable. So that would be something that I would consider emphasizing and advocating for on council. Our public schools. Many of our public schools are not fully accessible. It was 25 years ago that the ADA was passed. My local neighborhood school, Horace Mann, is not accessible. There is no elevator there. 25 years after the passage of ADA. Transportation, driving should not be the only way to get around. I would advocate for a walkable city. I would make it walkable by advocating to reduce traffic speeds in the neighborhoods. And that's not by just installing a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign. It's actually trying to design the roads so the speeds meet what we want the speeds to be. 20 miles per hour is plenty is a movement that I support in the neighborhood, on neighborhood streets. I would prefer traffic speeds be set at 20 miles per hour, not 25. I would like to see street trees. Oh, my goodness. Lots more to talk about. Thank you.
One of the at-large candidates who could not be here today is Michelle Payne. And she has asked Doug Rupert to read her statement. Doug?
Thank you, Bob. Michelle could not be here today. She's out of town, and I'm going to read this statement she's put together for the forum this afternoon. "Good afternoon. I'm reading this on behalf of Michelle Payne, who expresses her regrets at not being able to be here today due to work commitments. Michelle Payne is an incumbent on the Iowa City Council, running for reelection for one of the at-large seats. Michelle has lived in the Village Green area of eastern Iowa City for over 10 years. She's the mother of two adult children, a daughter living in Denver, Colorado, and a son living in Iowa City. She is currently a compliance manager at Mid-American Energy Company, where she's worked for the past 32 years. If reelected, Michelle would strive to continue to maintain the high level of city services we enjoy today without raising taxes. In order to do this, she believes we must grow our tax base through economic development. Michelle believes it's imperative that we continue to increase diversity within the city staff, boards, and commissions. Additionally, Michelle believes the high cost of housing is one thing that keeps many people, including the elderly, from being able to live in our great city. Therefore, we must look for innovative ways to expand affordable housing for working families, the disabled and the elderly. This could be done by inclusionary housing and incentives for specific types of development." Michelle says Iowa City is a great place. "Let's continue to make it better for everyone to work, live, and play. Remember to mark your calendars to vote on November 3 or during early voting." Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Again, we drew cards. And Tim Conway. Now remember, there are four at-large candidates. You can vote for two of the four.
So my name's Tim Conroy. Just, sorry, Bob, sometimes people mess that up. I'm used to it, though, but I am not the actor, despite my resemblance. I grew up in Iowa City. I grew up in Manville Heights. My parents were both involved with the University of Iowa. And I went away for college, graduated from Whedon College in Norden, Massachusetts, with my degree in political science. And upon graduating, I decided to return to Iowa City, both to start a career in real estate. I'm a Realtor at Blank and McCune. But also to put roots down. I'm just recently married, and my wife and I have chosen Iowa City, which is a place we both love to live in. And the secret about Iowa City is out, especially when we are considering the amount of retirees and those who are older who are coming to Iowa City, either who grew up here, moved away, and then came back to be closer to family, or for those who have never even known of Iowa City, but read and understand that we have a high level of service and a high commitment to those who are older looking to retire in Iowa City. And so the role of the city, to me, needs to be ensuring that we can continue to offer that same level of service and grow it at the same time. You know, right now, we are dealing with people coming in to the city, and that is going to put a pressure on the services that we already work hard to fund. Issues like accessibility, continuing the fight to make sure that we are making not only our public spaces, but our parks and our new buildings more accessible, is going to take some form of financing, and we need to develop the tax base to do that. And I really think that keeping our eye on being fiscally responsible and also increasing our tax base through certain development initiatives will achieve our ability to continue to fund these projects. And I thank you.
Next is Rockne Ko.
Hey. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for coming this afternoon. You know, I think as how we can most effectively serve our senior population, I think of something that our mayor said at his recent national conference on aging. He said, "The city of Iowa City needs to have a lot of singles and doubles in terms of how we serve our senior community." And I agree with that. We do need to hit singles and doubles in terms of how we expand those services. But I think something's even more important. We need to make sure that we protect our home runs. And when I look at the home runs that this community has already hit, I think that starts with our senior center. Over the past year, there was a task force that was convened, and I'm sure Counselor Dobbins can talk about that, to talk about the evolving role of our senior center. And in talking to a lot of the seniors that were part of that process, a lot of them expressed a lot of fear on two things. One, they had a concern about how those services would be changed. And two, they were enormously concerned about reductions in funding. Well, let me be very clear. I support maintaining the current level of funding that we have for our senior center. I think too often, we look at the costs that we are offering in terms of providing to our seniors, but I think we need to reframe it and not only look at those costs, but look at those assets. And I think of a retired professor in Ithaca, New York, or an urban planner in San Francisco, as they decide whether they're going to move into the city of Iowa City, what's one of the first things that they're going to look at? Our senior center. Our senior center is an asset, and we need to make sure that that funding is preserved. The second thing is, is they've talked about additional private funding mechanisms, and of course, we'll partner with any private fundraising to make sure that we can enhance those services. We need to make sure that those funding mechanisms aren't replacing lost funding, but adding services to that particular senior center. But it's not only that great asset. It starts with programs like the Blue Zones. You know, one of my concerns when I heard about the Blue Zones is that it was just going to sort of be a sticker on a piece of yogurt, and it wouldn't really be real. But it's more than that. It's how we increase the quality of life for our seniors through moving naturally, through promoting local foods, and also through building community. A lot of our seniors are lonely, so we need to make sure that we have public spaces where we can partner with our university initiatives, and we can have this sort of connection where our young people can go to and meet our seniors and sort of share those common interests. And the third thing is transportation. I think as we look as we grow older, not all of us are going to be able to drive like we used to. We need to make sure that we support walkable infrastructure, so you don't only need your car to be able to get around. I think that's going to be enormously important. And finally, listening. I hope after this particular forum that you'll come up and share your vision with us as to how we can more effectively serve you. Thank you.
And Jim, it's Rockne.
I'm 70 years old. As such, I'm one of only 8% of Iowa City's population that is 65 or over. I've learned a great deal about aging, first by watching my mother die of lung cancer, and then my father loses ability to drive, become trapped in a suburban home, and then develop age-related dementia. But it seems to me that the specific manifestations of becoming older always catch an individual person by surprise. You say you broke your hip after falling. You know what I mean. Those of us who are seniors have choices about how we will live the remainder of our lives. Over the years, I've seen many older people retreat into their homes, watch far too much news on cable TV, and become increasingly fearful and angry. At the same time, I have seen many older people remain fully alive by contributing their skills and energy to the community in which they live. Of the latter, I can scarcely tell you how inspired I am by my friends Gene Lloyd Jones, Bob Welsh, Miriam Kashiya from North Liberty, Harry Olmstead, Barbara Schlotter, and many, many others. So when I think about what Iowa City should do, I think about helping all the seniors in our city to remain as healthy and active as possible and to live their lives with passion and commitment. This is part of the just-city vision that I have been trying to articulate. So I guess I still have some time. I thought I was going to run out of time more quickly. So what specifically do I think Iowa City government should do? I'm going to give you four things. First, increase the supply of affordable and accessible housing for moderate and low-income seniors. 38% of householders in Iowa City that are over 65 earn $30,000 or less. So there's a big challenge. Second, work with seniors and creative developers to build attractive and affordable housing for retirees who want to age in place, especially near the downtown. Third, ensure that our elderly population retains mobility by having affordable and accessible access to paratransit and bus services. Last, support the senior center, as Rockne just articulated, while also strongly encouraging its members to attract a more diverse membership. That's a big challenge for them. So that's enough for right now. I'd be happy to answer questions you have. Thank you.
Remind you, there are four at-large candidates. You can vote for two, okay? District A has two candidates. You can vote for one, and Dr. Rick Dobbins next.
Thank you, Bob. I'm a bit unusual. Members of the university faculty don't typically focus their energies and our concerns on the local community. Instead, it's more regional, statewide, national, international. Actually, as a geriatric specialist at the University of Iowa, I thought it was a bit odd, and all of a sudden, I find that Pauline Taylor joins me. And I welcome her, interest in the community as well. You know, the two of us aren't very typical in the hospital, so it's nice that, you know, the two of us are so interested in our community. My interests are over a broad range of older members of the community. Obviously, I've devoted my entire career to taking care of older Americans. There are so many areas in Iowa City that are particularly adapted to taking care of the elderly. Elderly Services Incorporated, paratransit, or transportation for the handicapped are particularly suited to helping older members of the Iowa City community. The senior center has a long and great legacy in terms of serving members of the Iowa City. And I agree with Jim when he mentions that the senior center has also a great history, but also the fact that they have the challenges of increased diversity. And I think that's an excellent thing to mention as well. Pathways as well, in terms of helping elders get more involved in the community. I've been involved with Bob on numerous committees at the Johnson County level. I was in the Department of Public Health for a time as their appointed physician member, and was also involved in many things that help older Iowa Cityans as well. I'm sure there's a lot more questions. I'll get into further detail later. Look forward to that.
And the last of the eight candidates is Pauline Taylor.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. And thank you all for your interest in the city council race. My name is Pauline Taylor, and I'm running for the District A seat on the council. And I think it's important to note that all eligible voters in Iowa City can vote in the District A race as well as the District C race. All voters are eligible to do that. I've lived in Iowa City for over 41 years, working as a staff nurse at University Hospital. I did retire, though, from my full-time line in 2011 and working part-time now, so I believe I do have time to devote to the council because I think that's important. I think council members need to be sure they have time to really thoroughly look into all of the issues that come before the council. I love Iowa City, and I wish to see it continue to be the vibrant community that I've seen it become over the years. I decided to run for city council because I realized that it's not very productive to sit on the sidelines and watch as decisions are made that are not always in the best interests of all persons. I would like to be a part of a city council that sincerely listens to the concerns of its citizens and one that makes well-thought-out decisions. I believe that the role of the city is to assure the well-being of all of its citizens. This should be geared towards a life with dignity, respect, and quality of life, with options available in the community that address the social, health, and well-being, and educational needs for everyone, including the seniors. It is essential for seniors to maintain an active life physically and socially. We all know that it helps to prevent and/or lessen such things as dementia and physical disabilities. And I'm only 63, but I am a proud member of the senior center. And I believe that the Iowa City-Johnson County Senior Center serves the purpose of caring for its seniors very well. And I would not approve of any cutbacks to the senior center. I believe that it's important for the center to remain at its current location, not only for the sake of accessibility, but also for the amazing way the space is utilized in this building. It truly does serve to bring seniors together. I do believe that there's room for improvement in the areas of transportation and such things as maintenance of the curb cuts. The seats buses do not go to all areas every day of the week, and in fact, they are quite limited in their schedule. And many of the senior residential facilities have their own transport system, but most of them only run in the mornings. And after someone pointed out to me, I have noticed that although from a distance, the curb cuts look good, on closer examination, many are in need of repair, which makes it very difficult for wheelchair access, walkers, and arcanes. So in the long run, in the end, I believe that everyone does have a role to play in maintaining the vitality of its senior citizens.
I asked the seven candidates to write on a card the question that they would like to have asked. And Harry?
They said the challenge would be if I could read it.
Question is, and I guess we're going to start here, Tim, with you, and go, "Do you think Iowa City is an accessible city for seniors?" I guess, let's see. I could ask him about asking questions yes or no. I think this is one of those that is almost like, "Are you from Motherhood?" I would assume, am I right? Do you think Iowa City is an accessible city for seniors? Rick, just, yes?
Yes, and?
Go ahead.
Okay. You want me to come up there, or am I here now?
Use your mic.
Okay. Well, yes, Iowa City is an accessible city. I think something I struggle with...
Give you a minute, okay? A minute for the answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this a 15-second bite?
No, 15.
Okay. All right. I've used 45 seconds of it. I struggle to improve things that we need to take a look at. We're going to get to issues of how to pay for things. As we go down the line, I guess I would challenge members of the group, especially Pauline, Rockne, Jim, and John, to explain to us all these wonderful things that evidently any mother could love, that we're actually going to pay for. I think you're going to hear a lot of things that we all love, but if you really have to analyze it, you have to figure out how you're going to take care of this thing from a realistic point of view and avoid magical thinking.
Pauline?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Dobbins that Iowa City could basically be seen as accessible. In fact, when I was looking up senior-friendly cities, Iowa City is rated very high, and that's based on accessibility and education and healthcare. And we can't argue that healthcare isn't available here. But I do believe, as I said in my opening statement, that there are some things that need to be looked at closer as far as transportation and such things as the safety of the citizens with the curb cuts.
Rockne?
Yeah, the answer is, is yes. I mean, as I said, Iowa City has done a number of things really well. But to directly address Counselor Dobbins' position, I think it really comes down to where our priorities are. How do we view this funding priority in relation to any other funding priority? Because he's right. Every funding choice we make, we have a set of choices. How do I view this sort of infrastructure? I view it akin to police, fire, the library, core public services. So as I decide as counselor what we're going to fund, that is my value set, and that's what we're going to look at. You know, we do have new funding streams, and it's really up to us to be able to identify what we're going to use it for. And I think if we invest in key assets, I think that's an investment that will pay off many times over. So that is why we will fight for and stick up for those funding streams. To the extent that there's private funding available where we can enhance services, yes, of course, we'll be for that. But that is not magical thinking. That is hard-headed, realistic thinking, and it's preserving the core assets that we already have.
Tim?
Yes, I think Iowa City is accessible. I think there are things we could do to make it even more and make sure that we are moving in the direction to meet the demands coming in. And to me, it seems like nobody would like taxes to be raised to pay for something that is so important to all of us, because then we'll lose sight of the need and the compassion that many of us want to show, and we'll focus on more of the argument of, should we raise taxes or not? So to me, we need to, again, put emphasis on increasing the tax base that will allow for revenue to come in and then allocate that to make sure that we are meeting the needs and wants of our senior citizens.
So is Iowa City accessible for all its seniors? Well, it depends on where the seniors live in Iowa City, and it depends on their income level. It depends on, as a result of their income level, it depends on their access to various kinds of transportation. Can they afford a car? If they can't afford a car, do they have bus service that gets them to and from where they need to go? When? Because buses only run at certain times of day, and it varies by day, and so on. Or if they rely on seats, can they get where they need to go at the times they need to get there? Again, it varies because we just cut funding to seats. What, Harry, was it three years ago now? Rick? I don't remember exactly. It was something like that. And then we restored some of the funding to the proposed cuts. So I think the answer is, it depends in terms of whether Iowa City is accessible for seniors. And therefore, I think we do get exactly to where Rockne, to the point that Rockne articulated... articulated so clearly. It depends on what we choose to prioritize. And if we choose to prioritize more of the same, meaning build as much as we can, increase the tax base as much as we can, really fundamentally, nothing really changes in terms of how those funds get distributed among various people and so on, and neighborhoods within the city. And so we need to be focusing attention on how to determine our priorities in terms of how we choose to fund various services, various activities, and so on, within the city.
I'm speculating, but I would guess Iowa City gets a well-above-average grade on their accessibility for seniors. Of course, there's room for improvement. There's, as you can tell, a lot of talk on the budget, and essentially, that's what it comes down to, on what is a priority. And really, the only thing I can add to this conversation is, it's my job, as a remodeling contractor, to get all kinds of different people to work together successfully. And I would like to think outside the back box and come up with possibly some collaborative ideas to make the budget work all the way around.
I do think, I would agree with some of the prior comments. The answer to that question really varies depending on your circumstances. So some Iowa Cityans would feel Iowa City is highly accessible, others may not. Some of the challenges I think we face were mentioned, particularly housing, affordable housing, but also diverse housing. There are many people in my neighborhood who would like to age in place, and this would be the North Side, simply don't have options in the North Side to do that. So it's a challenge, you know, that we'll need to face. And I would also say that I don't know that I have ever expressed a desire to not raise our tax base. It's, that's, I'm certainly pro-development. I want to see good development. I want to see development that's context-sensitive and so forth, but I'm very much pro-development. Raise, increase our tax base.
Ask Eunice Smith some questions. Pardon, I guess we'll start with you. How do you feel about the Senior Center? Do you favor continuing to provide financial support for the center?
Well, and, yes. I think we've already articulated that. You know, it does come down to what we value, and I think that's really what it comes down to. But I think one of the things I really want to address are these false narratives that are so often presented as to, well, if you don't do these sorts of projects, then you're putting funding streams at risk for things like the Senior Center. Frankly, that's been an argument that's been trotted out for the last 15 years. And every time you've seen these different, and while we're seeing all of these sort of high-profile projects, have the funding and the support for our seniors, has that gone up, or has it gone down? As you've seen these increased funding streams, you're seeing a decrease in the willingness to commit to funding our Senior Center. We need to fund it. I am in supportive of that. And I think as we face these tough budgetary priorities, do we want to balance our budget on the basis of our elderly population, our disabled population, and our young people? I think the answer is, is no. I think we have to start with areas that don't involve those essential funding cuts, because I think a lot of seniors are limited by income. And so we don't want to put the population that's least able to respond to some of these budget cuts and make them essentially bear the burden of these budget choices that we have. So I am against funding cuts. We will stick up for those funding revenue streams, and we will, and there will probably be some political pressure, but we're going to face that one together, and we're going to stabilize that funding. How long was I? Okay, well, hey, pretty good for me, huh?
I do support the Senior Center, and would like to see it continue and to grow. I attend the Noon Rotary Group there on Mondays, and I really see how it acts as a community gathering place for those coming downtown, to have their routine downtown, and experience the vibrancy and what the downtown has to offer. And to me, when we have to look at numbers and funding, you know, taking something away only shortens, or, you know, shrinks the pie. Each year, our budgets are smaller and smaller, especially with some of the state changes. And so in order to keep the ball rolling, we have to do certain cuts that are harmful. And to me, if we do increase our tax base, particularly downtown, where the infrastructure is already in place and we don't have to expend that much money, then that will increase our revenue and increase our funding and self-sufficiency.
So, well, restate the questions. I've answered precisely to start off with.
How do you feel about the Senior Center? Do you favor continuing to provide financial support to the center?
Yes, absolutely. Rick does raise an important point. We do face a budgetary challenge, though I don't think we on the council have looked very, very carefully at how our income, our revenues and expenditures are projected to change over the next 10 years. We've gotten a forecast from our finance officer, who's really very good as a finance officer, that we should expect a reduction of $37 to $52 million in state funding, having to do with a couple of changes in the tax stuff. But what we have not looked at really carefully is how those things shift. Okay, so I strongly support the Senior Center. The people who are members of it care very deeply about the place, and it's a tremendous asset for the city. Also, I want to say something else about increasing the tax base as the solution to the problem. This is nothing more than trickle-down economics, which is a profoundly conservative way of thinking about finances. We should be much more creative as people who live in the creative corridor. And I think instead of just talking about it as magical thinking, we should think of it as creative thinking about how to address our challenges. Thank you.
Yes, I would absolutely support the Senior Center. A good friend of mine lives there. He and I played rugby together a generation ago, and he still knows how to get the upper hand on me. So if I don't support it, I'll have to deal with him later.
I too support the Senior Center. I was reading, in preparation for this meeting, some of the history about the Ad Hoc Committee and their findings and recommendations. And I would certainly support looking at how revenue streams can be expanded. I would be interested in seeing if the fees, at least for those who can afford a fee increase, could be, you know, the fees could be increased for those who could afford to pay a higher fee. You know, so we're faced with a challenge, and we need to look at what the solutions are for meeting that challenge.
Well, Jim, this hurt. You mentioned trickle-down economics, Reaganomics. That hurts. But I want to speak to the Senior Center. Of course, I support the Senior Center. When I was a resident physician, I was there years ago, in the 1980s, and so I've taken a long look at this. The Senior Center has to be protected. The way you protect it is that you just don't assume that, you know, we have to reshift priorities, as Rockney said. Well, okay, then what are you going to take away from, to help the Senior Center? That's where the leadership occurs. That's where I've had to take a look at. I also mentioned the fact that, John, I mean, Jim mentioned that we need to look very carefully at the prediction of our budget over the last few years, next few years. Really? I mean, I think we're pretty sure exactly that we're going to have a budgetary shortfall. We had to vote against transportation for the disabled? That was three years ago. We don't want to do that again. We've got some problems coming, and I've got answers.
Pauline?
Well, as I said in my opening statements, I'm definitely in favor of maintaining the Senior Center as is. When I first became a member, and I received the packet, the little booklet that listed all the services that are available, I have to be honest, I wasn't aware of that. But it's simply amazing, and I was there last week, and the band was, or orchestra band, I guess it is, was practicing. And that's just an amazing thing. It was a large group of people, and it seems like every time I'm there, there's a large group of people there. So definitely, I think, a council would have to do its utmost to maintain the funds, at least at its current level, to the Senior Center. And I think doing that, they need to take a close look at budget, and collaborate with all interested parties, and have maybe an innovative way of using all of the funds.
Can we provide a rebuttal, Bob?
Go ahead.
I want to be very specific about...
Here's the microphone.
I want to be very specific about those funding streams, because you're right, we'll have to articulate that. One, you know, Counselor Dobbins was part of a council that essentially is going to give away a $2 million piece of land that the city currently owns. Two, they've also supported money-upfront tax increment financing, which delays immediate tax revenue now for the prospect of tax revenue 20 years into the future. Three, the local ops and sales tax that was proposed a couple of years ago, I was against that, because essentially, 40% of those revenues were going to go to the reduction of property tax. I want my property taxes reduced, just like everyone else. But I think that that illustrates where the funding priorities of this current council are, and there are those revenue sources that are available, and that we will stick up for that. So to say that, those are three very specific things that we can do to shore up our tax funding, our tax revenues now, so we don't have to face those sorts of cuts.
Well, the obscenities is keep on rolling, so I'm not sure I can keep up with it, in terms of the sales tax. When you take a look at tax increment financing, and notice what they'll do, is they'll try and explain how we're going to pay for all these wonderful elder services, when we start shifting to tax increment financing, and trying to befuddle the situation. Tax increment financing, we're not giving anybody money that we have. What we're doing is that we're relieving the tax money that will be occurring in the future. They keep trying to switch the subject on that. The fact that what we have with the Senior Center is that the Senior Center has a remarkable opportunity. I know in senior centers around the country, that senior centers are very able to self-fund. Most senior centers self-fund completely on their own. Many self-fund from 5% to 20% from the jurisdiction that we're in. Our Senior Center traditionally has funded 85%. They have an opportunity to be challenged, and they will do extremely well with this, like all of the senior centers in the country, of being able to increase their funding, you know, through other missions. That's how we protect other important senior services in the community.
Let me go back to a question that one of the candidates asked, be asked. And I've selected this one myself because of my long interest in this subject. And I guess, Jim, we'll start with you. What can the city do to promote universal design in new construction? What can the city do to promote universal design in new construction?
Sounds like a question coming from Lynn over here. It probably is, for that matter. Well, let's see. I guess I don't honestly know exactly what is required in our building code with regard to universal design, though my sense is, correct me if I'm wrong, that for new construction, universal design is required. So if I'm wrong, Harry, if I'm wrong, Lynn, you tell me. The big challenge has to do with existing structures, as I understand it. And, you know, we all go into places routinely that clearly are not accessible to particular kind of disabled users. So I don't know, that's my answer. If I'm wrong, please tell me.
Scott?
I would work with the Home Builders Association more. Historically, they've fought this a little bit because of alleged extra costs involved with it. They've come around quite a bit with that. They have a certified aging-in-place program that they can take, or that members can take. And they have, they know a lot about it, including another organization that works with this a lot is Habitat for Humanity. So all these things combined, I would take a look at the design, and maybe even think about ways to, if you know you're going to potentially need it in the future, have it designed for an elevator.
Well, I mentioned earlier some of the things that we certainly could improve on in terms of the public realm and making our city more accessible, just with respect to paths of travel, and our public rights of way, and in our public facilities such as parks. We have a long way to go in terms of making them accessible. In terms of building design, it is an interesting situation in that I think we do, there is a market for universal design. So I think we need to incentivize developers to provide a higher level of accessibility in structures, so that we can achieve and provide access to that segment of the market that's looking for housing.
I would recommend universal design be instituted as one of our major missions when we have new buildings. Some of our buildings, we refer to crossings, we've tried to press for universal design. I have not been as successful as I've wanted to be, but that doesn't mean I won't keep pushing to get that as being one of our major missions.
Well, I would certainly encourage developers to provide structures that would be universally, have a universal design, particularly ones that would be accessible, affordable, and environmentally friendly.
I think one of the first things we need to do is really conduct an audit primarily of our older buildings, to see which ones currently do not comply with the American Disabilities Act. A lot of those facilities were grandfathered in, is my understanding, so we need to really identify. Because Jim's right, for the future buildings, for the most part, those are already required to comply in a lot of respects with American Disabilities Act. So that's the first thing that I would do, I think, really need to make sure that we get a sense of that. Two, I think here's a good use for tax increment financing. So for example, for the Vito's location, there's a $250,000 tax increment finance. And what was that used for? To provide essentially an elevator, to make sure that the building was accessible. I think as we help our private business owners to become more accessible, both in terms of where people live, and in terms of commercial areas, those are precisely the sorts of things where I think the city can be a willing partner to ensure that the private business owner isn't the one bearing all the cost, and that we can help him invest to make it more accessible to everyone.
I think we can work as a city to make sure that our building code is up to snuff when it comes to universal design. And if we have to revisit that, I am more than willing to help in that path. I'm unaware if that needs to be updated or not. And I would also say that, like Habitat for Humanity, some of the nonprofits that do great work as far as going into some of the existing homes, and, you know, making them more accessible, if we could essentially set up some sort of a system on the city side of that, if we had the money to do that, I think that would be a great way to go about it.
Bob, could I follow up a little bit? Yeah, I want to let you all in on a dirty little secret about Iowa City government. And when I say this, I really do not mean any criticism of any sitting council member or city manager or anybody, because I'd be criticizing myself if I did, and others. So I mean this, Rick. The fact is, we have a council manager form of government. That means, for the most part, on virtually everything, the best we can do on our current city council is indicate what we value to the city staff. And then with luck, if a majority of city council members are pushing for that, the city manager will act on it, and the staff will follow through. But with regard to what the city council itself does, we have an hour and a half work session every two weeks. We talk a little bit, we listen a lot to staff. We hardly ever give ourselves enough time to really understand particular issues, in the sense of engaging one another's concerns and really working through them, and understanding what other people have to say and why. So we have a flawed system, and I think it really needs to change.
Some of you know that I've been around quite a long time now. One of my favorite statements, when I moved here in '65, the mayor was Bill Hubbard. And one night, out in the parking lot, City Hall, Bill said to me, "You know, Bob, there is nothing wrong with Iowa City. That is not the result of bad decisions." I think that's true. When I retired, when did I decide I wanted to... When I retired, where did I decide I wanted to live? Iowa City. I have the feeling, and Jim, this, it's what you said, I have said privately, so I'll say it publicly, I am not sure that Iowa City has a council-manager form of government. I think it might best be described as a manager-council form of government. And I think that, from my perspective, the council does need to ask more questions, help set the agenda, rather than reacting to the agenda. So that's my speech, for whatever it's worth. Let me, on behalf of the people here, thank you all. We've got really eight minutes left, but I'm not sure we have enough time to give each of you a time to speak. So I'm going to merely remind you who are here and watching on TV that in the city council election in Iowa City, there are three sections you can vote for in section A, and every citizen in Iowa City can vote for the district-at-large candidates. But you can have one vote between Rick Dobbins and Pauline Taylor, okay? You can have one vote between Scott and John. And you get two votes between the three who are here and Michelle Payne, who's not here. Some of you may or may not be disturbed, as I was, at the Gazette yesterday. I don't know how many of you saw the Gazette yesterday. The Gazette yesterday had a big section on endorsement Iowa City Council. What I called the editors about was the fact that all of the seven who are here have an opinion piece. There is not a piece from Michelle. And I asked them why. You know, I thought that was a reasonable, and I told them I was presiding at a meeting for them today, and the answer I got was that she indicated to them that she did not have time. And I share that with you. Let me say on behalf of these seven people and Michelle, they all would appreciate your vote. They not only would appreciate your vote, they would appreciate your telling your friends who you're going to vote for and encouraging them to vote. And if you really want to help, they probably could use any money that you would like to contribute towards their campaign. And they don't have to ask you for money. I'll ask you on their behalf. So, you know, if there's one of the candidates or two of the candidates you really are interested in, you might want to consider investing $10, $20, $25 in helping them. Let me thank you all very, very much. I wish we had had a whole room full of people, but I hope that these people will carry the message forth and make it worth your while to be here. And so we do thank you. (applause) (music)